Welcome to the October 26th Columbus City Council meeting. We're grateful to have you all with us to watch government as it performs the duties of serving the people. We're going to begin this, this particular meeting the way we, we do all of our meetings, and that is by asking for the presence of God in our, our midst. So I'm going to invite to the podium Rabbi Shmuel Poland of Temple Israel. And I had the pleasure of being there when they welcomed the rabbi to Columbus. Sir, if you want to come up to this podium and, and pray for us or share words with us according to your faith's tradition.
Thank you. God, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work. Help them as leaders to ask not first, "How must we fix this?", but instead, "How do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom we need to listen?" Remind ourselves, they are leaders but also servants, and that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of us all. Remind them that no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbor, our sibling. In the words of our sacred text, of Leviticus, chapter 19, verse 18, our scripture states, "The hafta l'recha kamocha." Translated from Hebrew, this means, "Love your neighbor as yourself." Throughout the ages, prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least among us: our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, and those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who live alone, those who are forgotten. Grant our leaders the wisdom and courage to know to do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. May they uplift the voices of all honoring the sacred texts of Leviticus, and by doing so, love the neighbors among us. This we pray in the name of all we hold sacred and holy to this day, all that we hold good, right, and true. May it be God's will. Amen.
Amen. Rabbi Poland, again, welcome to Columbus. We're so thrilled to have you and your family in our city, and it was a pleasure getting a chance to talk to you all. And I know that I speak for all of the councilors when I tell you that we look forward to getting to know you and your family even better in the coming years.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, next, if you would, please stand and join me in a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as for all.
Thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion on the minutes. All right, this is a motion to receive the minutes from Mayor Pro Tem, and I heard a second from Counselor Garrett, I believe. Any edits or any questions or concerns about the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Give you, I want to provide an update on COVID-19. It's, I will be honest, I long for the day when we have a council meeting and I don't have to do that. I will tell you, though, that things are continuing to improve, not just around the country and the state, but certainly right here in Columbus. The one metric that we have reminded you again and again, that we've really been paying close attention to, is the hospitalization rate. The hospitalization rate continues to decline. I think we're down around 60, let's see, I was wrong, we've got 52. So we had been, back when the Delta virus became, we became aware of it, and we had a little bit of a surge, we, we said that we felt comfortable that our facilities were able to handle those, those individuals that were in the hospital if it stayed below 60. So this is the first time we've been below 60 in quite some, some time. The average rate of the daily positive cases has declined. The vaccination, number of people who have been vaccinated in Muscley County and have had at least one shot continues to go up, little by little. We anticipate sometime in the next several weeks, we will host other large vaccination sites so that people can come get the boosters. I know that they have approved Pfizer, and I think Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson, or the, I think they call it the Janssen, is, is up next. So we will notify you when those become available, and we, we create an opportunity for our, our residents to, to get that booster shot. Also want to make mention of some guests here in the, in our meeting. We have the Boy Scout Troop, Scout Troop 555, and this is part of their fulfillment of their citizenship and the Community Merit Badge. And we want to welcome them here and tell you that we're glad that you've had an, you have an opportunity to observe your local government, and we encourage you to continue to be a part of that local government by making your voices heard regardless of your age. You're a resident here, you see things that we may, may not, and I would urge you to reach out to your, your counselor and/or your mayor. So thank you. If you would, give, give, let's give these young men a round of applause. We also want to thank the troop leaders, any adults that pour into these young men and provide them with quality moral guidance, we are indebted to. So thank you for your service to these young men. All right, we will, oh, one other thing I wanted to mention. We've got Halloween coming up, and I want to remind everybody that we have, we have asked that the door-to-door trick-or-treating be done on Saturday between the hours of five and seven. We have heard from a number of teachers and parents who are concerned with the challenge that a lot of our school-aged children are having with their studies, wearing masks, and there's enough going on in their lives, if we could at all avoid them maybe staying up a little late the night before on a sugar rush and going to school the next morning. And we're happy to comply. We think it makes great sense, and we'd ask you to join us in, in doing our trick-or-treating on, on Saturday. But there's also a couple of events coming up. One, in particular, Counselor Toy Tucker has been spearheading this, and it'll be on Friday, the 29th of October between five and seven. It's a Halloween trunk-or-treat at Carver Park Recreation Center. They're going to have music and games and all kinds of good stuff. Did you want to speak to that? So we urge you to take advantage of that by going, going by. Counselor Tucker?
I'm just going to add that it's a drive-through, similar to what took place at the civic center. And if anyone would like to donate, thank you, Counselor John House, and I know Pop Barnes is making a donation. You can contact me at 706-225-9783.
Thank you, ma'am. There's also, I think, on the 31st, I think it's around the same time, about 5:30, Britt David Church does an annual event where they're going to have a lot of games. This will be not, this will not be a drive-through. This will actually be people showing up in person. It's at Britt David Park, and it's, it's on Halloween night on the 31st. Counselor Tucker? Whoop, hang on. Got you.
Yeah, and I wanted to add, the New Georgia Project is hosting, it's a healthcare block party for Halloween, but it's food, drinks, candy. Of course, they're going to have COVID-19 vaccinations, flu vaccinations, a DJ, a bunch of fun seasonal activities, and that's Saturday, October 30th, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the CSU Woodruff Riverfront Park, 100 Bay Avenue. So you're right, Mayor, it's a lot of stuff.
Lot going on, lot going on. And it's, and it's good for the kids, I think, to have an opportunity to, to get back a little bit of normalcy. So we're excited about that. All right, next, we'll move on to the city attorneys general. Mr. Fay?
All right, thank you, Mayor. The good news is that we can get through our agenda tonight before the first Braves pitch, but everybody else is going to have to do their part. The first item up, we need a vote on the zoning at 6565 Talakas Lane.
All right, there's a motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor Tucker. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Bruce, if you can cue it. Councilors, please register your votes. All right, and that is approved.
Counselor Davis, we got him too. All right, next zoning item ready for a vote is 1309 Wildwood Avenue. It's going to RMF2 Residential Multifamily. It's ready for a vote.
This is a motion approved from Counselor Garrett, second from Counselor Huff. Is there any discussion on this, this item? Hearing none, please, there we go. Councilors, please register your votes. That is approved.
All right. Next item is the demolition ordinance with one item removed from last week at 3,001 Fourth Avenue.
Motion approved, the demolition ordinance from Counselor Tucker, second from the Mayor Pro Tem. Are there any questions on any of the properties or any comments? Hearing none, please, there we go. Councilors, please register your votes. All right, that's approved.
Next item, Mayor, we have one minor amendment to bring up. It's gone around the table. Everybody should have a copy. Counselor Tucker would like to add in that when the city manager does close a park for public safety or public health reasons, that a notice go immediately to the district counselor where the park is located. If we could get a motion from Counselor Tucker on that amendment.
Is there a motion to approve the amendment?
Yeah.
All right, from, who made, Counselor Tucker made the motion, and second by Counselor House. Any discussion regarding the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Okay, we can. This is not for the item, this is for the amendment. That's okay. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, amendment's approved.
With, with the amendment, you can now vote on the entire ordinance, it's final action.
Motion from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor House. Any discussion? Please cue the vote. Councilors, register your votes, please. That is approved.
All right. Item five on our agenda is a new rezoning hearing at 1,417th Street, going from residential office to general commercial. Recommended for approval, are any of the Bussys here? Okay, Mr. Bussy's here. Any questions around the table for Mr. Bussy, the petitioner?
Doesn't appear so.
All right. Anybody in the audience want to be heard on this petition, 1,417th Street?
Ma'am, you can come on up to the podium, and if you would, just give your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Georgina Santi. We own Black Pearls LLC here in Columbus. We have property located on 18th. We already have problems with vagrants in the vicinity where this storage unit they're now considering building. We have tenants that are now starting to complain, "Well, if this is going to go through, what's that going to do to the neighborhood?" Oh, thank you. I have no answers for them, but having done my research, residential areas being shifted over to semi-commercial starts the downgrade of that area. So I am highly in objection to this, and I have spoken to some of the other property owners also, and I'm surprised that some of them are not here. They also are in disagreement with this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
In light of that, Mr. Bussy, why don't you come up and give them your name and address for the record and tell them what your plan is, what you're requesting.
Want me to give a brief summary again? Want me to summarize what I'm doing?
That's fine. Give them your name and address for the record to start.
My name's Shawn Bussy, 2105 Springdale Drive, Columbus, Georgia, 31901. I live maybe three blocks away from this building, so we, we've invested a lot in East Highland, a lot, to say the least. I've personally remodeled 20 houses in the neighborhood, revitalized, I'm currently revitalizing another one. You guys kind of put the pressure on me, but I'm doing another one on 20th Street. So I'm doing one on 20th Street right now. Total remodel. So it's not to say that we haven't done our bit in East Highland. This is, this was general commercial back in '08, when Martin Foods held the building. So back maybe 13, 14 years ago, it was Martin Foods already held the title, general commercial, it was already zoned that way. We rezoned it to residential office when we were going to put 33 levels of 10 apartments. So we've, we did the rezoning. We just want to send it back to the original. The storage units are very low impact, very, and they're very high-end. I don't know if you, I should have brought my little boards, but they're very nice. They create a nice frontage along 17th where there is none right now. We've got to do something. We've got to do something with it because the walls are falling out. You guys drive by this, I know, all the time. You see it, but you don't see it. It just disappears, but we would like to do something nice with it. It's a nice-finished facade. You guys have packets, do you have packets? Have you seen the facade, any of you? Nobody was?
Yeah.
This is the first objection, because the neighbor, right behind me, I talked to him and linked that he, he liked the idea. He just liked that it's being used. As you can see, it's a huge area covered on 17th Street. It's larger than you see.
Yes, sir.
So, and it just gives the building a nice overall. It's gated, alarmed, I mean, it's as secure as you get. I mean, it's, y'all have seen these around, Mr. Buck just did a large one over on Dobbiton Road. You know, they're very secure, no, they certainly don't bring crime or anything to the neighborhood. There's no, there's no access. There's no access. It's, it's, and then again, it's, it's not a huge burden on any city services either. Doesn't provide, doesn't require a large amount of water, electricity, or schools, doesn't take a toll on anything. But it does offer a nice use for the property. And there are many people in that, there's a lot of rooftops in that neighborhood that can use, you know, some storage in that, in the neighborhood. So that's, that's our plan.
Counselor Garrett?
I just want to speak, this is the property over there by the pharmacy, right? When you're going down 17th?
Correct, next door.
I mean, I've, I've been a lifelong resident of Columbus, and it's, for the past 37 years, that property has not really been developed or utilized to its full potential. I was skeptical, I know, when, when, in Charmaine's district, when they wanted to put storage units there, and the houses, the house values are actually going, like, I'm seeing houses suffer more, I'm seeing more commercial come in, and I was shocked. They were done nicely the way you're talking about, and, and I was a skeptic of storage units, but I will say that where I've seen it, because I do live right by, Counselor Krabs' district, so I pass by it every day, I think we've seen a reduction in crime in that area because there's just nicer, nicer things developing around it. So I know there's, there's certainly a myth that storage units bring the downfall of property values, but at least where I've seen them put up, they've done, done well. And this isn't my district, but it's on the border of my district, and it's certainly an eyesore that I would love to see turned into something. And I think they would be utilized. I mean, it'd be the closest storage units to me, either that or the ones by Cross Country. But I like the design, and I mean, I think it would be a positive move.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, did you have anything to add? Hold on just a second. Yes, sir.
I was just going to say that, as Mr. Bussy said, Larry came and did this rezoning in '08 to move it ro for the condominiums. And if I remember correctly, as I see Larry when he's, you know, not in Africa for months at a time, that he's, the Great Recession is what sent that project sideways.
Okay. All right, any questions of Mr. Johnson or Mr. Bussy? I don't see any gentleman.
All right, if there are no other hands in the audience, we will bring this back in two weeks at the next meeting, is that November 9th? And then you can take a vote at that time.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Our last item, Mayor, is a first reading, also would amend chapter eight and chapter 13 to establish some minimum fines for various building code nuisance solid waste violations. Mr. Pruitt is here. If there are any questions, I believe these have been discussed before with the council. See if there are any questions.
I don't see any.
All right, this will be a minimum $500 for the various offenses listed for the first offense, and $1,000 for a second and each subsequent offense at the same property location. All right, Mr. Pruitt, we will vote on that in two weeks. Thank you for being here. The only other thing, Mayor, we'd ask for a short executive session on a personnel matter at the end of the meeting. That's all we have.
All right. Anybody have any questions, the city attorney? All right, we'll move on to the public agenda. First listed on the public agenda is Mr. Harry Underwood, representing Fountain City Fairness Coalition regarding the nondiscrimination ordinance. I don't see Mr. Underwood here. We will give him an opportunity at the end of the clerk's agenda for three minutes if he shows up by them. All right, next is Ms. Starlet Kassam regarding the nondiscrimination ordinance. All right, we'll, we'll hold the same privilege available from Ms. Kassam. All right, next, Mr. Nathaniel Sanderson regarding yard waste pickup. Mr. Sanderson, welcome, sir. Please just give your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes, and if you're not, if you haven't been able to get it out in five minutes, you'll have three minutes that you can come back.
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel, Nathaniel Sanderson, and I'm here representing my property on 5452 Gettysburg Way, Columbus, Georgia. And before I get started, I will say that the trash has been picked up thanks to Counselor. I called my Counselor, and we were able to work something out. I've had this problem several times, and one of the things that I wanted to, I know we're, we're working on, you're working on, you probably have a plan for this right here, so that's not my, my agenda today. My agenda is, my intent is to highlight a few things here today. One of them is that people in the community are, when you leave trash out too long, they are dumping on your trash, and that's becoming a problem in the community. I've had, I've had this happen two times, not only my yard debris, but when I go back and I look, now it's other people's yard debris or my yard debris, and now I'm responsible for that. But thanks to, to Counselor, it's gone now, so we got that problem rectified. One of the things that, being a military man, retired military, I saw Major always taught us, said that, you know, he, he released all the NCOs one, all the privates one day, and he kept the NCOs there, and he, he put all us in line, and he told us, he said, "Well, you guys go on police call, and you're going to clean the battalion." And everybody was perplexed as to why he did that. And he told us at the end of, he said, "If you don't make the soldiers do it, then I'm going to make you do it." And that's leadership, and that's what I'm talking about today. It's just leadership, having, having the ability to have people look up to leaders and understand that everything is not going to get solved by money. I was very impressed when I heard Counselor Garrett just a few minutes ago, and I think I wrote it down, he stated that he has seen a reduction in crime due to development. I'm quoting you correctly. So we understand what's going on. We understand that if we clean up our city, and if we have leadership that will do that, then we're going to see a reduction in crime, which leads to something else that I want to talk about, but I'm not on the agenda for that today. But we, we know that leadership is, is important, and I just harken back to the time when Mayor Tomlinson was here, and we had a big problem in this city with people going into homes that were not yet occupied, and they were actually taking the copper out. And she came up with a plan, and we stopped it. That's leadership. And that's the only thing I'm asking for today. It's not all on the mayor, it's not all on each and every city council person, but I think collaborative, collaboratively, this problem can be solved, this, this waste problem. Thank you, and once again, I have to give credit to Counselor House. I called him and I asked him, I said, I told him, I was complaining to him, I told him, I said, "Why are you guys collecting money for bulk waste but not picking it up?" And you guys suspended it. So thanks for that, I thank you for that right there. But that's, I just wanted to do those, those few things right there, and wanted to bring to highlight, I'm not, I don't think I'm going to use my whole five minutes here, but I just want to impress on the council that no amount of money is going to solve many of these problems that we're facing. It's going to be leadership. It's going to take leadership, and somebody has to have righteous indignation that this community is looking like this, that our community is going down, we have a rise in crime, and we have, we can probably draw direct correlations to that. I know, I've heard, I was, I was told that you guys have a plan to hire people to haul off waste. But I can tell you right now, if the amount of money that you were talking about for hauling off waste, nobody's going to do it. I think it's $250 a ton, and I stand corrected if, if that number is wrong, but to me, that's not enough money when you think about a ton of waste, putting it on a vehicle, and the effort that takes to do that. And so I just want to just say thank you for the opportunity to come down here and just, as a citizen of this community, just express my concern, and hopefully we can do something in this community to rectify this problem. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And we, and, Mr. Sanderson, I appreciate it, we struggle with the same issues that you've just mentioned, and we, we have, have hired contractors to try to help supplement. And I know Mike Krittl's here, and I'm, so he can correct the misinformation I give, but, but we need 52 drivers just to run the routes that we are promising to, to pick up, which is, you know, which is a pretty good number of routes. It's the household goods, it's the recycling, it's the yard waste, it's the bulk waste in two different categories, one in the bulk yard waste and one in the bulk, the white goods, you know, the furniture and things like that. And Deputy City Manager Goodwin, I know, I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot, but how, how many people have we had working, that we've also hired these contractors? And I'm like you, I'm like, I got a truck and a trailer, and I don't know that I'd do it for $250 a ton, but man, people, people are absolutely going out there to, to do it. Deputy City Manager Goodwin?
Yes, we've had 12 vendors that we've been working with. We do have an RFP that we're working on to put out to really assess what that cost would be per ton. When we put this out back in, in early summer, of course, it was on an emergency basis, and so that was the cost that we came up with, but we're looking at getting a truer cost. So we're continuing with that.
So we're, we're trying to do anything we can think of, and you know, the interesting thing is, the city manager talks a lot about how, like, when we had our hub city mayors, we had mayors, it was our turn to host in Columbus, and we got to show off a little bit, but we had mayors from Augusta, Savannah, Macon, Athens, Brunswick, Albany, and we were talking about some of the challenges we face, and they brought up the trash pickup. Most of them have contractors that they contract with. They were calling, three of them called our city manager's office to try to find out what we were doing because they were even farther behind than us. That's not an excuse. It, it bothers us, and we do have that righteous indignation. We know we're accepting, regardless of what the cost is, we're accepting a cost to perform a, a service. And when we discovered it, we were not able to have the manpower to do that service, we immediately looked to contract with some people to supplement that. The one challenge we continue to face is when we use the boom trucks to pick up some of that solid of that solid waste. I know, I sent, as soon as I saw you were on to talk about this, I sent, I sent an email to Mr. Crittle, and so he probably heard from a number of different people because we were all concerned that it had been out there six weeks. So, you know, we are, we are sorry, we understand that our residents are struggling, and we are very hopeful that with the growing season coming to an end, we'll get caught up, and we'll have that plan in place when springtime hits again.
And also, Mr. Sanderson, in addition to those 12, of course, we are also contracted with 10 trucks through Amways, which is a three-man crew per truck, and so we have that in addition to the 12.
I'm very confident that we have the right leadership to get this accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, and I think that's, that's all for the public agenda. Deputy City Manager Goodwin, you want to take the city manager's agenda? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't turn it back on. There you go.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Item number one on the agenda is road improvement, safety, and in alternative transportation projects, and approval is requested to proceed with executing and funding the pre-construction requirements for road improvement, safety, and alternative transportation projects totaling just over $4.6 million.
Motion approved from Counselor Huff, and I heard a second from Counselor House. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please queue for the votes. Counselor, you can enter your votes now. I think we're missing one. Did we get it? We got it, it's approved.
Okay. Item two is a donation for the Columbus Police Department, and we are-
Approve both donations, thank you.
All right, there's a motion to approve items two and three, donations to the Columbus Police Department and the donation of a fire truck by Counselor Garrett, and I heard a second from Counselor House, I believe. Is there any discussion to either of these items? Hearing none, please queue for the vote. Counselors, register your votes, please. And Deputy City Manager, if you want to give a little information on those, so the public knows what we're doing.
Absolutely. Item two is the donation of 215 medical pouches from MSN Healthcare Solutions for Patrol Officers. And item three is the donation of a fire truck, which is a 1997 International Fire Truck to Oakland Fire and Rescue, which is in Mauk, Georgia, and this fire truck is over 20 years old and no longer useful for us. It has already reached its useful life. Item four is the acquisition of 230 North Oakley Drive, and we are requesting approval to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Midtown Village Partners.
Motion approved from Counselor Barnes, and I hear a second from Counselor Huff. Any discussion? Hearing none, please queue the votes. Counselors, you can register your votes, please. All right, that's approved.
Okay. And this purchase is a facility right next door to Station Number Four, and they will be able to utilize this property to expand dormitory and operational space at $78,000. Item five is the Housing Authority lease, license agreement, excuse me. An approval is requested to enter into a license agreement with the Housing Authority.
All right, there's a motion from Counselor Tucker, and I heard a second from Counselor Huff. Any discussion? Hearing none, please queue it. Counselors, register your votes. Oh, I'm sorry, there is a question.
Yes, this is an agreement to allow the Housing Authority to utilize 11 properties that we have as laydown for construction materials, which means those 11 properties that we have adjacent to the Mill Village, which is the old Chase Home Properties, they will be able to utilize those just to be able to lay and have a place for their construction materials as they continue to work on that project. Then they will clean up and- That's correct, yes, ma'am.
All right, and that's approved. I want to apologize for not turning that light on. This, that's the first, that's the first time I've ever had that screen pop up. I couldn't go forward or back, I couldn't get to you. So Bruce, you're going to have to teach me the nuances of this thing. Okay, that is approved. There's one counselor that has not voted. Okay, we got it? Good deal.
Okay. The next are purchases.
All right, there's a motion from Counselor Huff, second from Counselor House, to approve purchases A through D. Is there any that anyone would like pulled? All right, hearing, you can queue it. Counselors, you can vote, and Deputy City Manager, if you would, go through those purchases so the public knows what we're spending money on.
Item A is a change order on the Buena Vista Road improvements of the spider web. The proposed relocation of the water and sewer lines along Buena Vista Road can't proceed while the existing stormwater drainage system is in place, and so that's what this change order is for. Item B is two 2022 Ford Explorers, midsize SUVs for Public Works, and C is one forklift for Metro. Item seven is an add-on.
All right, we, we still have two counselors that have not voted on those purchases. Okay, and that's, they're approved. No, continue, please, ma'am.
Okay, sure. And item seven is an add-on, which is future payments to Court Reporters Connie Montgomery and Kim Raines for services rendered, and we're requesting approval to authorize a special acceptance, exception to the Columbus Code Section 19-36B in order to process future payments to Court Reporters Connie Montgomery and Kim Raines for services rendered relative to the case of the State of Georgia versus Mark Jones pursuant to forthcoming court orders.
Is there a motion approved? Motion of the Mayor Pro Tem, second, second from Counselor House. Any discussion? Hearing none, Counselor Crabbe? You're going to have to wait a minute. Bruce, when they start voting, it blocks my ability to go back and turn the light on. I can cancel, I'll cancel it. There we go. Yes, ma'am.
Didn't we have a conversation about paying Court, oh, this is Court Reporters?
Yes.
Okay, I answered my own question.
Bruce, if you would queue it again, please, sir. Counselors, you can now register your votes. Missing two. There we go, that's approved.
And the last item that we have is a update for, regarding evictions. And the update is in regard to the meeting that we had with landlords. We, of course, came to you on the 12th of this month to talk about and to share with you information on the three options that we were going to present to our landlords. So we did hold a meeting on the 18th of this month. There were about 60 landlords and property owners in attendance at that meeting. We shared with them, again, the process. There were three options that we presented to them, and the first option is, again, the same options that we presented to you on the 12th. And the first option was that the landlords would pay an additional flat fee of $500 to the city when they execute the writ of eviction to be used by the city to clean and to, and to clear the eviction debris in the event it's not cleared by the tenant or the landlord within the 24-hour timeframe. That's option one. Option two, which is the preferred option that we had, was that the city would pay the bulk waste vendors $500 to clean and clear eviction debris after the 25th hour, which means after the tenant and or landlord has not cleared and cleaned within 24 hours, we then will execute the contract with the bulky waste vendor on that 25th hour to go in clean and clear. We would then invoice the landlord for the payment to be paid within 10 days, and if not paid, the landlord would be subject to enforcement action for violation of a city ordinance and subject to a lien placed on their property. Of course, this is all contingent upon us bringing forward changes and amendments to the ordinance as well. The other option was three, which we are certainly in favor of as well, and that was for the landlords to give them 30 days to come up with a solution. That would be acceptable to the city in lieu of option two, which is the preferred option. So we certainly are agreeable to option three as well, as we told them at the meeting. Some of the comments that we received from, from those that were in attendance is that the 25th hour was just not enough time to remove the tenant's possessions. Also, there was a concern from landlords that had a question about the RFP and the offer to pay local companies the $250 per ton and picking up the bulk waste. They just felt that it wasn't enough money, as we heard here today, and stated that the filing fees, along with the writ fees for the eviction, just don't feel that, again, that's a 25th hour, it's enough time for them to take care of all of that. Also landlords does, landlord does a lot of evictions, and his concern was the 24 hours, and he should be able to haul the tenant's possessions right after the eviction. So that came up quite a bit, and that's a bone of contention that we've got to work with and work through, and the city attorney's office is working with us on that. We also had a hauling company that was there, who, again, felt that the flat, one flat rate would not take care of the evictions, that $250 per ton. Other comments was, there was a local attorney there that advised, he was just trying to get clarifications on the liens of property. Another, a landlord has tenants to leave on good terms, and he doesn't want to receive a citation for an eviction that was put out when tenants were just moving out and not evicted. And so, again, how do we determine eviction versus just bulky waste that is put out on the right of way or out there for pickup? And so we had that discussion. The other was, the city should allow the eviction material to be hauled to the landfill and waive tipping fees for landlords and or property owners. So that came up a few times at the meeting as well, that just allow them to take the stuff out there and then waive the tipping fees. Again, just for, as a reminder, some of the things that, you know, the public, the neighbors see and have to live with in terms of the, of this debris. And a few addresses I have here, this is in District 3, 2420 Dawson Street. This is debris that is just out there. Other homes that, places that have been, there are evictions where we don't actually have the addresses on file for these, we've taken pictures and just did not record those. This is District 1, 2467 Natchez, Natchez Drive, 1102 7th Street in District 7. This is on Floyd Road in District 4. 2419 Garten Street, District 3. And so, again, those are locations, this is, and I could, and I could put one up here for each and every one of your districts, because you have called us and you've shared with us the debris that is out there, and, and so we could have just, this could have gone on and on in terms of what I could have shared with you, because it's a lot, and we have to deal with it a lot. As, as just a reminder, in September, we had 122 evictions, 122, that somebody had to sit there, live through, watch, and see day in and day out. So, again, the option that was selected by the landlords that were there in attendance was option three, and so that's what we're working with, option three, giving them the time, 30 days or 45 days, the time that they need to come up with a solution. But I think as a result of the meeting and the conversations that took place at that meeting, I don't think they'll need that time. They kind of know what they want to do, which sounds like a doable plan, but we will come back to you with what that looks like. There were 22 landlords that agreed to serve on the committee, and of course, City Councilor Charmaine Crabbe is working with the committee along with staff to assist landlords through this process. We do have a meeting that is scheduled in November, the first week of November, and so we're ready to get this going so that we can then come back to this council. So, again, on the 18th is when we have the meeting, the initial meeting with the landlords. November the 9th will be the first committee meeting of the landlords. We look and hope to be able to come back to you on November the 16th, if, again, that is enough time for them, but we're trying to be aggressive with this. We don't want this stuff just sitting out there. This is not something that we want to go into the new year with. We want a plan in place before January 2022. And so hopefully that if we're able to come back on November the 16th with this plan and an ordinance to clean up, that hopefully will be first reading, and then we can do second reading on December the 7th and be ready to put some things in place. And so, again, we're moving quickly. These are your constituents, our citizens, our neighbors, and they should not have to live next to what you saw here today, period. Questions?
Counselor Huff?
Deputy City Manager Goodwin, great presentation. First question, will we have access to the independent contractors if we had people that wanted to clean up an area, for the trucks to haul to the-
Well, yeah, I mean, we're going to be utilizing those independent contractors that we have, those 12, and so it may even be more by the time we finish.
So as, as counselors, we would just call you?
Oh, no, as counselor, you would go through the same process of contacting 311, and then 311 then will put that work order in, and we get that out, so we don't want-
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying if we had a group of people, if I was working with a group that wanted to go into an area, like you were showing on-
Oh, that they want to go into an area.
Yeah, we were together, and they were going to come out and help to clean up the area. Would we call you to get the independent contractors there to haul it?
Yes, call me, and we can help coordinate some of that.
Yeah, I know, between you and 311, we got you.
Yes, we'll help coordinate that.
Okay, but that would be permitted.
If we got people out there willing to work, we want to be there to help you.
Okay, okay.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, and what, what does a ton look like? How much is a ton?
I mean, it all depends, in terms of the size, like Crittle, it's-
Size, sofas, and things on the material.
It's prop, yeah, a dick dump truck load.
Okay, 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 that's good enough.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a big, yeah.
Yeah, that's good enough.
You know, like a U-Haul truck, for instance, you know, you fill that up, something like that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Thomas?
Deputy City Manager, every time I talk about this, I find something new that I don't understand, and part of that may be because I don't understand all of the eviction process.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things that you say in here is that one of the landlords said he didn't want to receive a citation for an eviction put out when the tenants were just moving out. How do we know that? How do we know whether the tenant is just moving out and has stuff in his house that he wants to put out as garbage? And how, or was evicted? How do we know that?
We know that because the sheriff's office, every single day, will provide a list to Public Works of evictions. And so we know, and that's how Public Works currently will go through and pick up and clean up the eviction debris, because we receive the addresses. And so that's, we know the difference between just a move out and if it was an eviction based on what we receive from the sheriff's office.
So are all of these pictures that you've given to us move outs?
No, those are all evictions.
Well, why weren't they picked up?
Well, they have been picked up, these are just old. They've been, most of this has been cleaned up, and I say that, now, keeping in mind, again, 122 evictions that we've had, and Public Works is still behind with eviction cleanup at least two weeks. They're still behind in picking up eviction stuff. If you recall, when I did this presentation previously, their first and foremost responsibility is household waste, recycling, yard waste, and bulky waste. This, the reci, I mean, the evictions is secondary to what we have to do, what we're regulated to do for our citizens. The, this, and that's the reason we want to put some of the responsibility on the landlords, because this is their property, this is a for-profit business for them, and they're not putting any skin in the game. This allows them to put the skin in the game to make sure that their, their property isn't a nuisance property. And so if it just sits there, and they allow that material to just sit there for weeks on end, waiting on us to pick it up, then it becomes a nuisance property, and their neighbors have to live next to that. We just cannot pull- We just cannot pull consistently our people from yard waste or bulk waste where we're already behind, just to clean up this for-profit business.
And if they pay us five-hundred dollars a eviction, will we be able to do it then?
Well, again, we're using the, not only our resources, but we'll be using those bulky waste contractors that we currently have.
That answers my question. If we charge the landlord five-hundred dollars and the landlord pays that, can we get this material picked up within twenty-four hours?
To answer your question, yes, we're going to look to do it on the twenty-fifth hour. We're going to pay that bulky waste vendor.
You just said it takes two weeks.
It has been taking Public Works two weeks. Public Works, it has, they're behind two weeks, but we're not going to be relying on Public Works. We're going to be relying on the independent bulky waste contractors who's out there waiting for that work. Right now, we're not utilizing them.
Well, I guess part of my concern, too, is with whom do we have a contractual relationship or a financial relationship? We, the city of Columbus, as I understand, and I'm certainly open to being corrected, we don't have any connection to the tenant, right?
No, we don't. We don't.
Our connection is with the junk that's on the sidewalk, on the right-of-way, or the whatever. We have, this would establish a relationship with the landlord?
The landlord will be the responsible party, yes, ma'am. They will be the responsible party. That's who we are going to come after. If it's their property, if it's the, if that landlord, who is the owner of the property, if it's theirs, then that's who we deal with. That's who we will then send the invoice to, to get our five-hundred dollars back that we've just paid to the bulky waste vendor to go and pick up their material.
I guess part of my question and concern is, why are we paying? Why isn't the landlord paying? Why isn't the tenant paying? Why are we in that circle? I can understand if, as a tenant, I'm evicted, and I have to move, and I have to move my stuff out of that house, and my mattress is too old to move, and I won't get a new mattress. So put that out on the curb. But I guess I don't understand some of the other kinds of things that are going on. If the tenant moves out and leaves all his or her stuff in that house, I want to make sure that we're, that the proper people are responsible for getting rid of that stuff in that house. And I'm not convinced at this point that it's the city.
Well, yes, and we are in agreement. I think we're saying the same thing. The city is not responsible for that. But because it's waste that's on the street, and when I say on the street, on the right-of-way, you know, right now, they're supposed to be putting that on private property. But even with it on private property, you know, it can cause other problems throughout for the neighbors and for the street, because it's going to blow and wind and all of that. So it becomes still a solid waste issue. And so at some point, the city is going to get involved with even issuing citations or notice to comply, be it on the right-of-way or on private property. And so because the sheriff's office is responsible for making sure that the material is out of the house at an eviction, and then they leave, the sheriff's office leaves at that point, now, right now, the tenant typically has twenty-four hours to come in and remove everything, which they typically don't. And because they don't, well, the landlords, you know, will remove some, and other times, they're just, they're going to leave it out there because they know the city will ultimately get it. We don't want that. We don't want them to just sit that out there, waiting on the city to ultimately get it. We want them to come and clean up their property so that it does not become a nuisance. And so that's what the five-hundred dollars comes in. Again, that's just our preferred, our preferred option. But now we're telling them that if you have a better option to clean up, all we're looking for at the end of the day is to get that property cleaned up. Whatever your means is, clean it up. And so if they're able to come up with something within this thirty-day period that works better for them and for the neighbors in that area, that's what we're looking for. We just don't want, you know, to continue to see what you saw here today in these photos. That's all we're trying to do.
Well, I guess, too, Ms. Goodman, that it seems to me that the responsibility for cleaning up the waste is the landlords. And I will tell you that I think that because in the last week or so, I've had a couple of contacts from people who have ridden down Oaks Avenue, right off River Road. And if you go down River Road to Thirty-Eighth Street, there's a house sitting there that has a pile of trash that's been out in front of their house for months. I don't know if it's an eviction, or if it's the person who lives in that house who just keeps dumping it out. But it's been there for a long, long time. You turn, the next block is Oaks Avenue. And just about every house on Oaks Avenue has junk sitting out on the sidewalk. And I don't know if those are tenants, or if those are people who own those houses, but it's still junk sitting out on that, on that right-of-way. So can you tell I'm frustrated?
Oh, I think we all are. Yes, ma'am, I think we all are.
I want us to do right by our tenants, our landlords, our neighbors, our everybody. But I'm not convinced at this point that a five-hundred-dollar charge is the way to get all that cleared up. I'm going to have to study it some more.
I understand, I understand. But we know that, you know, we've got to hit them where it hurts in order to make a difference. And I say that, you know, I'm a landlord myself, have several properties here, so it touches me, too. I absolutely understand that. It's my responsibility to make sure that my properties are clean, and that my neighbors don't have to look back.
And you know, I don't know how you're going to rent that property. You couldn't rent that property to me with all that garbage out in the front yard. So anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. At the bottom, at the end of the day, this is not just an eviction problem. This happens when people move out of their, move out without an eviction. It moves, it happens on, you know, when people get a new mattress, and they throw their mattress in the front yard and expect us to pick it up. I think maybe this is a starting-off spot, but I think we're starting off in the middle of the story. And I think, as a body, we may want to consider something a little bit more drastic than just going after landlords on evictions, because it's not just landlords, it's not just evictions, it is people not taking responsibility for their own bulky waste. Why should the city be taking people's bulk waste when they just, when they get a new refrigerator and they stick it out on the street, or when they get a new mattress and they stick it out on the street? Ultimately, that is that person's personal property and personal responsibility to take care of bulky waste. And I may be stoned for this, but I think we need to really take a serious thought into possibly, kind of like the tree for fee or something like that, on bulky waste, where we charge everybody. We do not pick up bulk waste anymore. We pick up household waste, we pick up yard waste, we pick up recycling and bulky waste. There are many, many companies, there's twelve of them that, you know, have been hired by the city. There's other companies out there that that is their job, and I don't think that we should be in competition with the businesses in this town. And I think that we should give them the opportunity to make money, pay taxes, and pay for their licensing fees and all of that. And we need to get out of the bulk waste business. And I would like us to have a very in-depth conversation about that.
Might make a good work session topic.
Sounds good.
Counselor Davis.
Thanks, Mayor. And I just remind everybody, we do with the service fees and integrated waste fee, we do have a bulk waste fee that goes in there, but it's not an eviction fee. It's not, that's, the two that you're talking about, two separate issues. So it's hard to compare apples and oranges when really, and they are different. I mean, they're totally, they're totally different. But, you know, everybody knows that we're having a problem in that area right now with, whether it's yard waste or bulk waste, you can call it what you want to, but there's still issues out there.
That's right.
And there's still a lot of it out there. And, yeah, it does bound up, but an eviction is totally different than people putting their bulk waste out. That's part of an integrated waste fee that we all utilize. But my question is, the lien, when you put the lien on the property, is there a legal process to that? Do we do it in-house? Do we contract out with an attorney? Is there a cost to that?
Finance, yeah, is the lien, once the lien is placed on the property, is there a cost to it? Is there, yeah, what's that process? I'll let finance, our deputy city manager.
No, we can, we put liens on properties for weed liens and demolition liens. There's not a cost associated with us filing that lien. I mean, it's a process that we go through.
Just done internally.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Just like a contractor's lien.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions of Deputy City Manager Goodman? All right, well, we look forward to an update on what the landlord committee comes up with.
Absolutely, thank you.
And counsel will have an opportunity to make a decision once all that's gathered.
Okay, and that ends the city manager's agenda.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll go on to the clerk's agenda. Madam Clerk. Who hit you? Hit your button? There we go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of counsel. On the clerk's agenda, we have a resolution excluding the absence...
Second.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tim, second from Counselor Tucker. Any discussion? We'll queue it. Do we have that? We don't? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is approved.
Item two is an email correspondence from the Board Secretary, Kenneth Henson, Jr., advising that the Hospital Authority of Columbus has re-elected Mr. Ernie Smallman, Mr. Mike Welch, and Dr. John Kingsburg, and they can all be confirmed.
Motion to confirm from Mayor Pro Tim, second from Counselor Huff. Any discussion on these nominees? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? They are confirmed.
Item three is a resignation letter from Dr., or excuse me, Mr. Jack Kinsman, from his seat on the Pension Fund Employees Board of Trustees.
In favor, save with regret. Second.
Motion to receive with regret from the Mayor Pro Tim, second from Counselor Huff. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
All right, there's a motion from the Mayor Pro Tim that the Minutes of the Board of Tax Assessors, the Development Authority, and the Mayor's Commission on Reentry be received. Second from Counselor Huff, or excuse me, Tucker? I'll get there eventually. Any, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right.
We have an add-on item. It's correspondence from the Board Secretary, Catherine Kelly, from the Development Authority. She's advising of the resignation of Lisa Smith.
Okay.
In favor, save with regret.
All right, there's a motion to receive a letter with regret, second from Counselor Huff. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Next, our board appointments for council district appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed at this meeting. On the Recreation Advisory Board for Council District Two, we have James Wilkoff. His term expires at the end of the year, and he does not wish to be reappointed. We still have a vacancy for District Three. Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. We have the Airport Commission. We are still waiting to hear from them on their nominee. Council actually confirms the nominee that they submit. On the Animal Control Advisory Board, we have a vacant seat for Kristy Newlett. Board of Elections and Registration, the Republican Party Chair has submitted U.D. Roberts as the nominee to represent the Republican Party, and this may...
Is that to be confirmed next week, or?
Mm-hmm.
It's for today or for next week?
For today.
Okay, there's a motion to confirm, and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Roberts is confirmed.
On the Board of Health, Dr. Chokhar is not eligible to serve another term, and her term expires at the end of the year. For the Board of Tax Assessors, Chester Randolph, his term expires at the end of the year. He is eligible to succeed himself. And Counselor Huff is nominating Alice Graham. Does any other counselors have a nominee?
Counselor Davis.
We'll nominate Kevin Jones.
We'll bring these nominees back at the following meeting. On the Cooperative Extension Advisory Board, the seat of Margaret Hingdon, she is eligible to serve again. We have not heard on her interest yet. For the Development Authority, the seat of the late Jackie Lowe is vacant right now. Mayor Pro Tim Allen and Counselor Barnes are delaying their nominations until the following meeting. For the Personal Review Board, we have the seat of Torrance Goodwin. He is eligible to serve again.
All the nominees.
We'll bring that back, Counselor Huff. We have Dennis Walsh as alternative member. He is also eligible to serve another term.
All the nominees.
We'll bring that one back. For the seat of Tracy Walker, she is eligible to serve another term. We have got correspondence from the H.R. Department requesting that she be moved to the seat of John Rowe, since she has had the experience of being an alternative member, if someone would like to nominate her.
Counselor Crabbe.
I'll nominate Tracy Walker for that position, but I also want to go back to the Animal Control when we have time to go back.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So we'll need another nominee for the Alternative Member seat, number two. Darlene Small, she is not eligible to serve another term as an alternative member. Tracy Walker's just been nominated for John Rowe's seat. And Dr. Pettaway, her seat is actually currently vacant, and she is an alternative member also. For the Uptown Facade Board, Alan Udi, he does not wish to be reappointed, and we are still waiting to hear from Uptown. Counselor Crabbe for Animal Control.
Counselor Crabbe.
Yes, I have. Is this advisory board going to change in any way with the RFP that we have out on Help me out here with the Animal Control. Yes.
That'd be a question for the city attorney's office. Well, hang on, we've got Deputy City Manager Goodman, did you have something to tell? She hit your button.
The Animal Control Advisory Board.
Basically, the Animal Control...
It's not on.
You need to hit the light there.
It's not on.
All right, hang on, coming to you. There we go.
Here we go. Yes, the Animal Control Advisory Board will remain in the ordinance. There won't be significant changes, except as to how they get staff support. The main thing that they do is, under state law, they handle the cases on the vicious classified dogs, and that role will remain absolutely the same. So is it still going to remain our responsibility to appoint people to that board, or would it be the person, the entity that gains control of animal control? Well, the ordinance would not need to be changed as far as council's appointment of the positions.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, that's all we have on the clerk's agenda.
Okay, we do need an executive session, but before we go into executive session, we have, I think, a couple of individuals that missed the public agenda, but we do allow them three minutes at the end of the clerk's agenda. So we'll circle back to Mr. Harry Underwood, who is speaking on the nondiscrimination ordinance. And Mr. Underwood, we'll start the timer, and you will have three minutes.
Yes.
And if you would, I'll start the clock after you give your name and your address.
A quick request to, Starlet Keesem was not able to make it tonight because of a, of a health issue regarding her mother. Can I also read the statement that, that she also wanted to give tonight?
If you can get it done in three minutes, yes, sir, but you can't speak two times for...
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Harry Underwood. I live at 8082 Veterans Parkway in District Six.
There you go.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council, Mayor Anderson. I wish to, once again, reiterate that we need the nondiscrimination ordinance passed here in Columbus. Back in May 8th, we passed, if this council passed a resolution that would, that at least endorsed the idea of a nondiscrimination ordinance that should be passed in this city. And here we are, like, in the fall, and this has not materialized as of yet. So what we're asking for is like, and we're probably going to come back and come, and circle back to public agenda until we can see this bill, this ordinance come back to the table, or at least, and also see the town halls happen. We're waiting for the town halls to materialize and be scheduled so that people can have their say if, if that's necessary in order to pass this, this ordinance. And that is what I hope we can, we can do for this, this ordinance. So I hope that justice delayed and being justice denied, that we do not see this bill, like, once again, sink. And then I wish to read out Starlet Keesem's statement, or at least a little bit of it and everything, and come back to it, maybe at the next public agenda.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yes, let me pull this up real quick. Thank you. And she also lives in District One, I forgot her address. But to the members of council, in reference to the nondiscrimination ordinance, I would like to express my views on this matter. Without this ordinance, the citizens with disabilities of all walks of life will not be protected without the nondiscrimination ordinance in place. Our citizens will face discrimination without a nondiscrimination ordinance. The government is allowed to prevent any such individual from accessing public housing, jobs, healthcare, or even public government assistance. Without this ordinance, everyone is affected, from the children to the elderly and in between. This is not a gay issue, as people may think it is, and sadly, government officials agree without knowing the full details of how discrimination affects everyone in the community. I am a white, married woman who raised a special needs child with autism, ADHD, intellectually disabled, i.e. mentally handicapped. We also cared for my disabled mother who has COPD aspiration, congestive heart failure with her heart function only at 35%. She is currently in ICU at St. Francis Hospital, and from there will go to rehab before coming home. Prior to my spouse and I took care of her, if we were a heterosexual couple, we would still be discriminated against due to her special needs and my 63-year-old disabled mother. Without this ordinance, the government would turn us away from services they desperately deserve. My spouse is a disabled veteran who fought for the rights of everyone, yet this government does not see it the way that the government can at free will deny anyone they doesn't, they feel doesn't deserve government assistance. I implore you to look into the mirror and ask yourself, if I was an ordinary citizen who needed government assistance, would I too be discriminated against from not passing, by not passing this nondiscrimination ordinance? Thank you.
Mr. Underwood, I want to thank you for your work on this. I know you've put a lot of effort into it, and I just want to let you know that it was not defeated. It was, there was a lot of questions, and I think that the council wisely chose to delay it indefinitely so that there could be some education opportunities that would take place. So I, I don't think you've seen the last of it. I just think it, it's going to be a, a matter of time before it, it comes back. But, but I did want to thank you for your efforts on it.
And, and I especially want to thank Councilman Garrett for his indelible work on this.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, I will now entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel issues. Motion approved by Mayor Pro Tem, second from, from Counselor Huff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you all for your service. I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are back in session. We were in executive session, addressing a personnel matter, and no votes were taken. Before we adjourn, I want to say that with all due respect to my good friend, Counselor Glenn Davis, who was a, an all-star and an MVP candidate for the Houston Astros, go Braves. So we'll, we'll now entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.